All right. Good evening, everyone. It's time to call our regular scheduled August tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting to order. I had to see everyone here. Um, it's been a busy uh month as usual. I don't know if it's ever not busy at the library. It's always busy here. Um, so I think we will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. You take a look at what we got. Um, you, um, is there a second or any support?
What?
Okay.
Second? Oh, I received.
Yes.
I'm trying to make my hour for um record, right?
Yeah, I think I'm trying to, maybe I'm.
I'm trying to make my hour for um record, right?
We're not good enough. You traded too much coffee today, didn't you?
I have had about four or five cups, so we're all right. Thank you. Is there a support? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That will take us to approval of minutes from our uh July board meeting. So hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. I think we should develop earlier in the week. Um, and we have a copy here in front of us now as well. Um, so we will entertain a motion to approve the from July.
A motion that we approve the minutes from. What?
Okay, it's been moved improperly seconded that we would accept the minutes from July. Any discussion?
Yeah.
It's now.
The treasure report, it says motion by Brown approved may expenditure, so it should be June.
Catch, Kathy? Any other discussion, any other corrections? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standard.
As appropriate, the motion carries with one extension. That will take us to the treasure report. You Kathy?
And move that the board approved the July two thousand twenty-three operating bills totaling six hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and for sex.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
All right, it's been proved a move then properly seconded that we would approve operating bills um in the amount indicated. Any discussion?
Just have a question. What is DK agencies?
The agency is the um books, we we buy Indian books, Hindi, Hindu, Hindi, Latin. Okay, and they show. All right, thank you.
Another question. Patient. Okay, if not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Received and filed the two thousand twenty-three financial report.
Is there a second?
What?
Okay, and moved and properly seconded that we would receive the uh financial statement for July. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let it begin by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do you have the report from the friends tonight? Okay, great. Well, not great, but we're actually used to having Stacy here, so I'm quite surprised she's not here. Okay, I may have a check on it, make sure it's okay. Um, that will take us to the director's report, Kelly.
Um, you saw all the patron comments in your work packet. Most staff loved the one about the swimming pool that needs to be on the library. Did you see it? Why not gonna be the light part of it, right?
It's a hot topic around town, right?
Uh, so uh what do I want to highlight? Oh, I'm gonna highlight the one about the new website that's on hold and Sarah's gonna go through that a little bit. Until August twenty-fourth, so it's not going to go live tomorrow. Oh, great, yes, yeah.
It must be for my birthday. That's the day before my birthday.
Oh, so your birthday.
Thank you.
Like, you know what? I think we can combine some marketing campaigns. So, anyway, so she'll talk about that. Our next food truck is August twenty-ninth, and it's the Rolling Stones, which is nice. Um, creative writing competition this year. They did really well. They got seventy submissions. Usually they're not that high because it's summertime and stuff, but they did really well. Um, and it's for ages eleven to fourteen and fifteen to nineteen, poetry and fiction. Um, the award ceremony is Saturday, September ninth, and they um. The winners read a portion of their work, so if you don't have anything to do on that Saturday, it's it's a nice to come in here and let them read or hear them read.
You know what time that will be, Kelly?
I wanna say one o'clock, maybe. I can email it. It's on my, it's on my calendar.
Oh, that's for you.
Yeah, it'll be on the calendar. Um, I am one of the judges. I have fiction. It's gonna be difficult, but um, so anyway. The reading has ended July thirty-first. It ended. Um, we had a total of three thousand six hundred and sixty-four participants. Approximately, they still had uh another week to finish. I think they haven't until Monday or something, something to finish. And they run approximately forty-three thousand four hundred hours in June and July, which is bad.
Good.
Yeah. Um, programs of interest, we have the nonprofit fundraising series that Sherry is heading. That's gonna start, well, it's already started. First one was August seventh. Um, we have movie talks with Farren. They're doing fences, the movie fences. And then, of course, we have the American Red Cross Blood Drive on August thirtieth, so anybody wants to give blood. Um, just giving you a little bit on the agreement overtime and turnover rate as, you know, end of fiscal year. So a hundred and forty-nine point seven five hours of free heart reviews for the last fiscal year. Overtime hour costs were three thousand. That's those odd fifteen minutes here and there. Um, and your turnover rate was eleven point six five percent to compare to the previous fiscal year, which was fourteen point seven three percent compared to the chaos years of fifty-four point five. Five percent. It's simple.
Just bleeding. And then a bit of.
Right.
What was caused by?
Chaos.
Hmm, a lot of factors. I have a question about the turnover for this year. Is that because of dissatisfaction or people found that it counts?
Uh, most of them are pages. Did I include pages in here? I think it was. Well, like, one of ours left because she went to live in Australia with her boyfriend. One of them left because they had a hamster job. Yeah, full-time job, so it wasn't really that. Yeah, yeah. Um. And then, of course, the one that thing that Stacy did want me to mention, and I put it in here, was Save the Date, author Angela Bulley. Um, October sixteenth from six thirty, eight-thirty registration is open and it is required to attend. And then Maria is honored to be on the steering committee for the Farmington Vice.
Oh, no, 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 it's not a steering committee. I'm just a committee to bring ideas to the, they call it a steering.
Well, you know, I think we're gonna be out throughout the year. So the vice Farmington Vice and no solution.
It's a big deal, two hundred years.
I mean, I don't get to say yay or an a, you just bring it. Hey, say yay or. Then we have to find one. But that's, that's any questions for me?
No questions. Um, but thank you as always. Um.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Have some. Dear Kelly, this many thanks note is written to confirm my grateful heart for much help received on July thirteenth and getting my email on my new Kindle. Emma Herb and Patrick. So very kind and helpful in getting me set up. I'm eighty-one and love the convenience of my third Kindle. The library is always very helpful and pleasant, comfortable, gratefully, let's see, night quest. Yes, so there was that one. And then this is for you. And this is a compliment for Sherry. From Dorothy Feeny, wanted to compliment Sherry Bond for organizing the food trucks at the main library throughout the spring and summer months. We attended the latest one, the lobster truck, and it was excellent. Please continue with this family's program. We, along with many, many others, will support you sincerely.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and then, I think this is awesome. And then we did get two other comments on the spectrum. One was um different spectrums. One was the Volvo Boat Series.
Hmm.
The one patron didn't understand what it was about and thought it was actually gonna be about the boat itself, but not the uh historical aspect of it. And so was upset that he didn't, it wasn't what he thought it was. And then the other one was another comment about a different, oh, this is about the nonprofit series about diversity and speakers.
Right. Um, one thing I have is a nonprofit series, but I just heard people want you to do more of them and they want you to do that. I I have actually had that request, so, but uh, yeah, thank you, thank you for the report. Um, and to all the staff for the work that they are doing. Um, I continue to hear a lot of good things all the time, so thank you very much. We'll turn it over to Donald for the intelligence report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, the twelve mile conveyor prints, we have approved them, met with the demo team on July twen- July seventeenth. I'm waiting now for schedule uh from the demo team to the in implementation team. We wanna get, keep those as close as possible. Bibbidi Street Garden, I'm still waiting on the numbers for that one. We moved that up to fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And what's happened there is we had a failure on the garden pumps around front, and we get a lot of water in the fall, so that's gonna be a very important piece to get prepared before we move forward. Uh, twelve mile lockers, uh, we just have to do a walkthrough with that. I think I got, I have everyone's email, but Megan, as soon as I get Megan, I'll put something together and then we can do a walk. The jail had an interesting thought on it, and it's to put it out back. That was interesting.
Full lockers, twenty-four seven lockers, full pickup, oh, whole pickup.
And that's it, very much.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the locker outdoors, that would give that twenty-four seven access you want, so.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, and now we'll turn it over to Sarah for an update on uh the website.
So, um, thank you. We will be switching over to a new web service provider on August twenty-fourth. That's a Friday. Uh, we'd originally planned to switch over tomorrow, uh, later this evening, but uh over the past weeks, there were just a couple of things that popped up in terms of migrating the server side of it, so not on the website design or content, uh, any issues with that. But there were a couple of things that uh popped up that we needed to make sure that we addressed and wanted to make sure that we knew we knew how to address it properly without any um. So we could minimize any impact that the public might might see or experience when we did that. Um, but I can go ahead and bring it up, so Kelly has it up behind you all. So this is going to be the website that we are switching over to. Uh, the structure of all of the information is the same, uh, so everything is still uh sectioned off between just our homepage and then everything that falls under about us, collections, events, and services. Uh, there are a couple new functionalities that we're really excited about. Uh, so first of all, um, do you wanna display one of the dropdown navigation menus, Kelly? Uh, so uh, one thing we wanted is just to make sure that our dropdown menus were a lot easier to navigate, uh, especially as we add more pages. Um, we can go ahead and go to the board page just so that you all are aware of how your section of the website is gonna look. Um, part of this project was also updating some of our content and copy just so that everything is consistent in terms of the tone that we're using and all the information is updated. Uh, so I did do a little bit of updates just to the description of the board and the work that you all do. Um, all of your bios and information is the same. Um, and then where you'll go to make sure you get anything for the meetings, if you go there to download any of the information, will just be on the left if you wanna click the meeting agendas, minutes and recordings. Do you wanna?
Oh, sorry, I'm talking to. No, we're still describing.
Best way is to show them. Uh, so we, uh, one thing I did was we've created a YouTube playlist for all of the meeting recordings now, so we do just have them going back through twenty twenty-three, so all of those uh meeting recordings have been uploaded to a YouTube playlist and users can get to them from this page as well. Uh, so just so you know, this is where you'll go to get all of those updates. Um, if we wanna go back to the home. Um, so one more thing, uh, our search bar functionality, um, if you wanna click search up, right? Oh, right here, yes, okay. Uh, so this is just some better functionality for users as they're searching our website, so they can choose if they're searching catalog, the events, um, or farmlive.org. The content that is just on our website. Um, one of the main reasons that our IT director decided that we would not just go with an updated design, but switch over to a different company for hosting the website, is that it's also gonna help a lot with the page loading speed, um, because we're hosting our website right now on our own DNS server here in house and it's older equipment. It's harder to maintain and make sure it stays updated and uh, address any issues that there are that uh can affect page loading speed, so that's one of the um improvements that we're expecting when we switch over as well. And then it's not on a test site because it'll only be activated once we actually switch over the farmlive.org domain to this new site. Um, but we will also be having a new accessibility widget for our website as well. So if you wanna switch over to UniWebsite. Um, and then in the bottom right corner, if you click on the user in the blue circle, it's at the very bottom for how, again, yes. Uh, so this will be on our site uh on on all formats, uh, no matter what size device you're using, so users will be able to, um, if you click through some of those uh options, you can see that you can like click the contrast one, for example. You'll be, they'll be able to adjust the color scheme uh of the site to to different versions, uh, in case they have any visual impairments that are uh made easier by adjusting the contrast. There's a screen reader that is built in uh for anyone who has highlighting links uh the. You're doing great, Kelly. Um, so, so there's quite a, quite a few accessibility features on here, so this is something that we're really excited to be able to add, just so that anyone in the community, uh, no matter, you know, uh, what what form of accessibility accommodation makes it easier for them to experience our services on our website, we can offer that for them. Um, and then we can go back. And we can just go through the the home screen and show a couple.
Can I go down?
Yeah, yeah, you can just go through it. So most of uh the the kinds of content that we had on our current home screen, we'll still have, so upcoming events, which you can look at through, whether it's, you know, for adults, twins, or kids, uh, we have the ability to spotlight some videos for different content. Um, our online learning databases will always be featured on our homepage because we're trying to improve the engagement with those services. Um, if you want to hit view all resources, uh, one of our our priorities with this project was to make sure that the structure of our online learning resources was a lot easier for patrons to be able to navigate, so here we have it visually broken down a lot more excessively for a user. And uh, if you want to go to all the resources, A to Z, the search bar here will search through all of the descriptions and names of these resources. Um, and then it's just laid out uh in a much more presentable way for users to be able to browse through all of the resources that we offer. So this is what we may be switching to on the twenty-fourth. Uh, communication will start going out to the public on Monday next week, and we're excited.
Are the images restored or are they permanent?
Uh, which which image, but that, in other words, you mean will the images be taken away?
Yeah, that that image isn't working.
Uh, the ones that, uh, that one right there in the left corner?
Yeah.
Okay, tho- those can all be changed, so uh none of them are there permanently. We have the ability to change all of them.
When when that first opened, there was a little caption below it that like gave the mission, like we serve a diverse, and we're looking at four white people. Four old white people.
Over here.
We need to change that image.
Yeah, but before that, um, one of the screens, that mission was actually below that. See there's.
Oh, when I go under.
It doesn't work. It doesn't work.
But that's the caption for that.
It doesn't work. I am, I are an old white person, but so, no offense to old white people, but that image doesn't work.
Yeah, we can definitely change that. Thanks for pointing that out.
On the on the accessibility, I'm like. Is that? Time out after sitting. Or is the next person that goes to search something on a computer, they're gonna have all that?
So any user that is visiting the site, if it's on their own device, if they go back to that browser, it would keep those settings unless if they're clearing their cache. Uh, on our public computers, it would reset any time that someone has logged out and a new user is logging in. Cool.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts?
Right. Yeah, it does look great. I received an email there about the web thing now. Is that part of the what was happening?
No, so that was actually, um, the, one of the companies that we work with, our IP registrar, they actually had an issue, um, which just coincided with the day before we had originally planned to switch it over. Um, so that was something that affected a lot of the companies that they hold the domains for that had had any recent record changes, and we had done some record changes in preparation for the switch over. So that was unexpected, but it was not an internal issue, it was a veteran issue.
I have to say, that gave me uh non-emergency phone lines are down lives. So when I got that, I sent you a text saying that, and it didn't go through, so I thought, you know, the fifty-one people are like, busy enough, you didn't need that energy, so it just bounced right back to me, but yeah, I thought, oh, God, nothing, not both emergency phone line thing. Um, but Sarah, thank you very much. I do think, um, the website looks great. I mean, you could just tell at a glance, just looking at it as you uh kind of come through it, Kelly. And it is gonna be easier for people, I think, to navigate, uh, find the services they need, and I like the way that you kind of oriented access around, maybe interest, right? Um, and I think that's gonna be a huge, um, I think, uh, step forward in people being able to use the website and access more resources. I do think Chris's commentary around, you know, this representative imagery across all our collateral is hugely important. Um, even here at the board table, um, all the way through. Um, so I would echo her comments there, but thank you very much.
And I do hope that we explore the rest of the website, because that's definitely not the only image that is used, and if you see our social media, I think that we do a good job in making sure all of our population is represented, so I just.
No, I I think, I think we do, but I think like, uh, maybe even a slider or something in those regards, which I think we do have there, but if we could expand and make many images are loaded there, right, and even have more probably patron and community focused images would be great, so. All right, I will turn it over to Sherry for our staff presentation.
Nope, I gotta switch things.
Okay.
All right. I'm not, I I haven't shared yet, have I? I haven't, oh, no, cuz I, yeah, no, that's fine. Is it now? Yes, okay. Okay. Are you ready? Share it?
Yeah.
Did you share it? Oh, sorry, no. It's not that share, why is it sharing, I don't know. I'm looking at a. I need to see the picture. Well, okay, you're waiting. Sure.
Another note.
Another note?
That's on here, you know, if you guys wanna put some diversity in the picture, please. Here's.
Twitter.
No, you have it here.
I do, why wouldn't she?
It shows up on your screen.
It's that, yeah.
She just can't seem to share it.
Yeah, let's try.
Try closing everything else, I hope.
Yes, we'll try this.
Close all your other window. That's a picture of your brain, you know, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, close the wall. It's, I'm stopped sharing and, uh, okay, let's close all of these and let's.
Yeah, stuff like that.
You know, it's like, there we go. Well, oh, my goodness, okay. Uh, my name's Sherry Bond. I'm gonna talk to you about nonprofit and business and some of the things I do at the library. Screen? There we go. Okay, this picture, I think, is from two thousand seventeen, to best of my recollection. It's from Farmington area Chamber of Commerce Business Expo, and you can see me in the picture. Um, so part of what I do is I manage the library's nonprofit fundraising program. Um, I write and secure grants from foundations, um, state of Michigan, federal grants, and businesses. Um, I provide training and support to employees, local businesses, and nonprofits. Um, I have the programming series, the small business series, and the nonprofit fundraising series that's going on. And I offer one-on-one support for businesses and nonprofits. Uh, they can sign up for one-hour appointments, um, for our website. So some of the major accomplishments, um, are the nonprofit fundraising series, which I started last year. Um, as you'll see in a minute, I have a new grants and nonprofit webpage and brochure. Um, a small business lunch and learn series that I did last year, uh, planning for that again in February and March. Uh, we have a new website for small business and also a brochure, which is on the table back here. Um, we have a new, fairly new database called Business Plan Builder, which from Dale's engage. It's useful to businesses and nonprofits to help them manage, whether it's just a business plan, they can do their financials. Um, it's, it's pretty good just for giving even a snapshot of what you want your business to be. Um, and so fundraising, um, since two thousand twenty has brought in a hundred and three thousand dollars. And to break it down, um, for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, we received about forty-six thousand dollars, as you can see, from the Bosch Community Fund. And I just wanted to point out at the bottom that since two thousand sixteen, I think it says, we've, they funded over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for programs, services, and collections, which otherwise may not have been funded. Um, some smaller grants from the Foundation for Youth and Families, you can see they give out a thousand dollars, so we're lucky to get that every year, uh, for some great projects. Um, the Chamber of Commerce, three members this year donated a total of two thousand dollars support summer reading. We got started on that a little bit late this year, last year, but we're gonna start earlier this year to see if we can get some more donations. Um, the Library of Michigan, um, we received grants, um, in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. Um, bringing our total, um, funding and corporate sponsorships for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to just over seventy-six thousand. This is the slide that I did on Monday's presentation. It was a national, um. Session, uh, with Hand, sponsored by Handed. Um, it was on proposal rating. Um, so this went over a little background information. So we've actually been a funding partner with Handed since nineteen eighty-four. Um, providing training and using their resources and materials. This is the branding for Handed. I thought it was pretty cool, so I included it in the slide in case. Um, you weren't aware of Handed, they used to be called the Foundation Center for years.
So what is Handed?
Does that mean, okay, uh, it's the Foundation Center.
Somebody a lot of money.
Um, they used to be called the Foundation Center and then they joined forces with Guide Star. And so that's the name that they come up with.
I can and I did.
Well, there you go. All right. Uh, this is a sneak peek of the new website featuring our grants and nonprofit resources. Um, I still have to add some featured book titles in there, um, so that's gonna be coming a little bit later. This is the nonprofit fundraising series that I did last year. Um, a hundred and fifty-four people attended, uh, the five-part series. Uh, the fifth part wasn't included on that flyer. It was a, a late addition to the program. Uh, but this year's, uh, nonprofit fundraising series started on Monday and there were about sixty people who attended, uh, the. And this is a sneak peek of the small business, uh, source of resources that we have. And again, I'm going to be out of the section for featuring different titles on there. It just isn't ready yet. This is the small business series, uh, lunch and learn that I did last year. And I am scheduling speakers again for February and March. Um, so that's what I'm working on now, getting that lineup ready. So last year in February and March, there were two hundred and fifty-six people that attended the six-part series, um, on the lunch hour. And I'm grateful to the Friendsville Library for sponsoring the luncheon and also the Small Business Resource brochure, uh, that I have on the table back here. Um, so I'm connecting with the city of Farmington Hills, um, working with the city to try to get a business, a pop-up business, uh, library, um, on the third floor of the HOP. So I've been in talks with city officials and I'm still waiting, uh, for them to get back with me on that, but that's something that I'd like to have shown. Um, I've also submitted a proposal to install a sidewalk decal walkway from the library to the HOP. And they would include that in their, um, their publicity and we look forward at, at both locations. Um, also Christina Broadway, who's the director of the Economic Development City of Farmington Hills. She's gonna be one of the presenters at the series in March of twenty twenty-four. Um, so I'm working on a line for that. Uh, the Greater Farmington Area Chamber of Commerce, the library has been a member for forty-five years. Um, I have been a chamber ambassador for the last seven years. So my role is to mentor new members and also obviously to share the resources, uh, for businesses that we have at the library. As well as all the other services, of course. This was the morning boost that we host once a year at the library. So there were twenty-five local businesses, uh, that showed up early in the morning at eight AM. Um, and there's a picture of all of us and Kelly was there as well. The Food Truck Tuesdays, um, it started in April and it goes through the end of September, the last Tuesday of the month. And it's sponsored by the Farmington Friendsville Library. So those are the dates of the next one, uh, August twenty-nine and September twenty-sixth in the parking lot, uh, weather permitting. The first one, a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty people attended. It was a rainy snowy day. You probably remember that. Um, but we had a really good turnout. Um. The Vision Unlimited Program, uh, were here selling items, um, and Comic Aid, which is the local comic book store, uh, was here as well. And so between April and July, we brought in four hundred and forty-five people to the library. The Farmington Author and Book Festival, uh, this was held in June third and downtown Farmington in Memorial Park. Um, it was sponsored by, uh, the Foundation for Youth and Families, um. In collaboration with Kickstarter, that was our partner and the Friendsville Library. So this displays a little bit more about it. Um, there were seven hundred and fourteen people, um, that walked through and played authors and publishers. Promoting their books and sessions helped throughout the day. We had readings, poetry workshop, romance writers, publishers roundtable. And of course, the keynote addressed by Stephen Matt Jones. And the next slide shows you just the lineup. I was gonna do this presentation earlier, so I just left the slide in here. That was a lineup for the day that we had. So what am I doing now? Um, the nonprofit fundraising series is continuing, uh, through, end of September. Um, I've been invited to be on a business panel at the Michigan Library Association, which is gonna be in October. Uh, to talk about aspiring entrepreneurs and your library. And of course, the small business series that I'm putting the final touches on now, which will be in February and March. And then also planning for the next Farmington Author and Book Festival. Which we believe that they will be celebrating in the diversity of Michigan stories. And, um, that will be sponsored in part also by the Friendsville Library.
Any questions for Sherry? Any comments? I have some, but I'll reserve them until after this.
I tried to go quickly so you'd be out.
You're good, dear. Always smiling, saw that great program.
Wonderful, connecting with, um, business leaders.
Yeah, and like I said, I really have heard, uh, just a lot of positive commentary, people. They, they know this several of those programs that you referenced, um, of the small business series, the food truck Tuesdays, whether they came or not. It's like, I've been doing a lot of stuff. I've, I've been seeing this, that and the, and the third. So, um, you definitely are, um, continuing to build on, you know. The role that we play as that resource for small businesses. So thank you.
Yes.
And, um, we'll continue to score however we can. I did take note that, um, you haven't heard anything back on the pop-up library at the HOP. So we will give our friends at City Hall a call and ask them to call you back.
Okay. I, I have a question about that. So are gonna be, um. There?
No, we would be staffed at certain hours.
That's certain hours.
Yes.
I like that. All right. Thank you very much, Sherry. Much appreciated. All right, that takes us to, uh, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. Uh, and we do not have any subcommittee updates, uh, per se, or we'll give a personnel update. Well, I give a little bit of a personnel update, just probably an ask, maybe. Um, if we can maybe schedule a personnel committee meeting, uh, once we have our new board members installed. Um, just to maybe get an update from the, uh, Work and Benefit Conditions Committee and, but Bob kinda worked through those things, okay? Okay. That will take us to new business. Um, so we have a draft twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. In the package. Looks like this. To my knowledge, I do not believe there are any additional days, um, added here. For you, the only changes here are the dates, uh, represented. So with that being said, um, we would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. If anyone's so inclined.
A motion.
Please support.
Or.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule as presented. Any questions or discussion?
Do we, um, is this standard with other libraries? This is the one of the library? It is.
And what I will say, um, in addition to that, Curtis, is when I came on board, um, I actually kind of did a little survey of my own, just to see. You know, how many days on we had, how many days off we had compared to neighboring libraries. Um, and I think we do provide a general schedule. It's not the most generous schedule and it's not the least. I think we're somewhere kind of in the middle on that. Um, so I felt good about where we're positioned in that, in that regard. Uh, some are taking weeks off in the summer and stuff like that.
I, I don't think it's anything that this board needs to address at this time. But at some point, we may have to look at the number of Christian holidays we take versus any other. Religious traditions.
Well, some of them were open. Like, we're not closed on.
Yeah.
Uh, I see.
You know, so, yeah. We're, we're open. It's just noted, that's a.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't understand that. I didn't understand what that meant.
Yeah, I know. The libraries open like Juneteenth were open, Martin Luther King Day were open. Some of them are what they call floating holidays, such as President's Day. Because it's a federal holiday, so way back in the time, they gave you four hours to take any time. You didn't have to take it on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I've worked with.
Yeah, and I like the, the Good Friday situation. Uh, we're probably listing that because some of our, um. Compadres are actually closed on that day, so it's kind of like this for awareness of, uh. But, um, I do think it's something we'll continue to look at. Um, it's been, it will be about two years now since we actually really kind of looked at it and assessed it that way. So I think that's something the Personnel Committee could take up.
Yeah, it's affected. Those are paid holidays, correct? Or not all of them.
The only one that, so New Year's Day is paid. Well, uh, Monday of the Memorial Weekend is paid. July fourth is paid. Monday of the Labor Day Weekend is paid. Thanksgiving Day is paid. You're paid the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth and thirty-first on January first. So I think there's eight paid holidays.
And again, probably not to be, um, discussed here at this time, but maybe referred to the, um, Personnel Committee. Might be the matter of actually closing, uh, either Martin Luther King Day or Juneteenth. Just something to be considered in the future.
Yeah, um, and I think we can take that up in Personnel, um. For Martin Luther King, um, the library has, since the inception of the celebration, has kind of been the centerpiece kind of and really drives the programming. So, um, I don't know that it would be likely to be closed that day, but certainly. Yeah, no, and we did talk about.
I'm not recommending. I recommend a conversation.
No, and we did talk about it a couple of years ago, the last time when we looked at this, and that was kind of the thought that you're, we're such a large part of the programming for that day. That it would, the, the public would expect us to be open that day.
But now we have a new federal.
We do. Not as big as Martin Luther King Day.
Basically, we have, I mean, we've done it, we did a story time of the year, but, and then we don't typically schedule any. Like, I move lunch. So that I didn't have it on that day. Um, and then we also have two other floating holidays that can be used for religious reasons.
Oh, okay.
That, they're like, we have two extra to cover whatever.
Okay.
That's a little bit of a plug in on that, but just so you know.
And I have made a note that, um, it probably is about time to review. It's been about two years. Yeah. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Uh, carries. Uh, next, twenty twenty-four Millage Discussion.
Okay.
This is just, I am going to be, I think we need to start the discussion. So I'm gonna be sending out a, a doodle poll, um, for sometime in September, October. Obviously, not everybody on the board can be on, in the meeting or on the committee, anybody who might be interested at that time. Um, I've been gathering information. I've been talking to Plant Moran. I've been talking to Ann Serenek, who's the attorney, the library attorney who does millages. I've been going through the Millage webinar series. There's four part series. I'm trying to figure out what we're going to need to do, the timeline and that kind of stuff, what we need to ask for, you know. Give you options. Um, so. My thing is we kind of. Set the way we wanna go in September and October and January, you start. You have to incorporate the committee. You have to, um, there's all kinds of paperwork that you have to fill out to, for a ballot committee. And, and so we just need to have a basis of what we wanna do before we start that ballot.
Right, and setting a project plan for all of those activities that need to take place, when they need to be done and when you're responsible. Um, so that sounds good. Now, the course, um. Think maybe when I came aboard, I remember, was this through United for Libraries or was it different? Millage training that you're talking about?
No, this is Library of Michigan.
Uh, okay, I don't recall, of course, I took, but maybe if you shared, just so I could be aligned with what you took.
Okay.
So that we're looking at the same thing.
Yeah.
Or any questions for Kelly on Millage?
So who, should I send, so who do, I send the doodle poll to?
Well, I think if we could ask here tonight to see if there's interest, if people want to express that, or if, if not, you could ask later, maybe. People are comfortable, but I mean.
I've been on a Millage committee. I may be able to offer something by actually thinking about it right now as my heart beating.
So I think.
Millage committee for a school district, so it was, I, I think probably much more complicated than a library village. But making my heart really.
That's a good idea.
Everybody.
And we've got two new members, um, that will hopefully.
So you just have to make sure that no more than.
Four, right, and so I reserve a position to let four others be on the committee.
You might be able to catch those new members off guard.
You're on this committee, yeah.
Twelve weeks ago, I sent this, uh, resolution submitting village postal and the official ballot. Those were for the two thousand eleven, um. Village and also the official ballots in two thousand and five. Did everybody or did anybody get those?
I don't really.
Yes, I believe I got it.
So I'll send it to that Farm, Farmington Library email address.
She didn't take use of that.
I guess.
I don't remember getting it.
I'll send it to everyone and our new people too, when they, when they get their address. Because I think it's important to read it because it tells exactly what the language was. It also tells, um. The resolution that we have to do.
You have to do it.
It's a valid language. And also I might have sent the email, but I said it might have talked about, um. When things have to get done, how many days before, um, the election, we have to get the resolution in and the ballot. I have all that.
Yeah, there's a whole thing ballot. Type thing, yeah. Um, yeah, and, uh, you're gonna have to decide what you're gonna go for. Plant Moran, Plant Moran is recommending.
That's what.
One thing. I was recommending that, but that's up to you.
They're probably gonna be recommending more than you probably were thinking.
They're recommending the full one, no, because you know we're on the rollback, uh, so there's, we have to worry that. Very carefully, because renewal is the renewal of what you're currently being occupied, not the what you originally asked for. So. Yeah.
That's the, um, the brownfield when come out of the snow, which were the.
Um, I don't know. Which ones they come out of.
There's two.
Yeah, there's the DDA and the brownfield. There's also a quarter. I don't know if we're part of the grand or a quarter either. Do you know? Anyway.
Okay, well, we get there, yes, um, and we'll get, um, interest hopefully in the next week or so, so you kind of know we'll, we'll, we'll be in that next meeting. All right, that will take us to, uh, trustee candidate discussion. Um, and, you know, the Personnel Committee, members of Personnel Committee did meet. And we, I must say, had a lovely time, um, interviewing several candidates. Who all had, um, a tremendous heart, I think, for civic service. And a lot of very valuable skill sets, you know, um, and perspectives, I think. Lenses, right, to look through that I think. Lenses, right, to look through that I think could be important for us. So as a result of our. Collaboration and deliberation, we did arrive at a finalist candidate that we would submit for recommendation. To Mayor Barnett and City Council at Farmington Hills. I did forward her resume to everyone, which I think we forwarded all the candidates out previously. And so that candidate was Sharon Snodgrass. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to recommend Sharon Snodgrass to the mayor and council of City of Farmington Hills. For appointments to the board. If there's one at the table. Thank you. Is there a second? All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we would submit Sharon Snodgrass as a recommended trustee. To Mayor Barnett and City of Farmington Hills Council. Any discussion?
We need more lawyers around here.
Mr. High.
Say about that.
You know what? I will say two things. That was a certainly a point of conversation because we were talking about skill profiles, right? What we have, what we needed. Have had two of you at the table previously, and that was lovely, right? But we did talk about that. But by the same token, we also looked at Sharon's, I think, involvement with the library, how integrated she's been with some of the things around here, her breadth of experience. And quite frankly, she just didn't quite present as a lawyer. So. You know, but no, that was a point of consideration, but it was out of the chart for us in this particular case. Any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And with that being said, I'd also announce that the City of Farmington has made their selection. And they have already made the appointment and sent the letter. And now I am moving. You don't know, but I have her name.
Oh, all right.
But you have. Wait, I had it right here and now I don't. Yeah, here it is.
It was in your email.
Right, here it is. Dilhara Mutakuda. She is our new trustee for Farmington. And so she was appointed this week. I saw several of the Farmington Council members and Mayor Bowman this week, and they all were very excited and. Were like visibly excited about her joining us and they think she's going to be a tremendous asset to our team. So I'm looking forward to meeting her as well. Now that we are back to a full board, I will have Crystal again pull you for some dates for a little retreating. And team building so we can get to know each other, get to know the new members certainly. And maybe explore some cool thing or things around town. So be on the lookout for and invite. Crystal to kind of get your availability. I promise probably not to keep you more than half a day, four hours or something like that. You know, I will treat you. I will keep you for a weekend retreat unless you want to.
She was appointed on Monday.
Yes.
Today is Thursday.
Yes. You're wondering like, why isn't she here? Well, I don't know that. I think the expectation may have been set based on the conversation I had with them this week that she would. She would come to our August meeting for installation. I believe that was the expectation. But no, I had the same thought because when I walked in, I said, but no, I did speak with them. I don't think they set that expectation. So we should see her next month. We call out though.
Because we've done the interview and to give our suggestion to the mayor. We sending out the letters to the ones that didn't.
Does she know the ones that, I mean, were they all sent to her?
Well, she does know everyone that we interviewed. And you know, frankly, I think we'll consult with her on that. I think from our perspective, since we conducted the process, we will probably give some feedback. We'll make sure that's coordinated with Mayor Barnett. You call our Kathy. All right, so that's, I think, all of the items that we have in new business. Any correspondence?
No, I.
Any public comment? No publics present. Sherry, do you want to act a public? Sometimes Maria decides to act as public. All right, that will take us to trustee comment. Any comments from any trustees?
I just want to express my thanks to the personnel committee for all the work they did interviewing candidates.
I thought that, and I think I really enjoyed it. And I thank Renee for hosting us at her home one evening. And I think. You know. Creating community, that's what the library is all about. Okay, so that's what we are trying to do for it too. I do have a brief comment, just to say that I did attend the joint meeting between both cities and the Farmington Public Schools this week. And so interesting meeting for sure. As you all know, if you were here last month, Stacy basically admonished us. To really make sure that the library had a presence at both cities. And in in City Hall meetings, just to make sure we're at the table. So we're doing that. I arrived five minutes late, so I was like interrupt the whole thing, you know. Everybody at Biddy was like, Sherry, like, so everybody knew I was there. And she, in fact, indicated that she would prefer in the future, if the library board and director were present. At these joint meetings, because she feels that the library's services, facilities and. You know, just actual connectivity with the community is probably an important ingredient for some of the things that the school district is trying to solve for. So I appreciate her support in that regard, and I think all of you certainly would provide. Certain lens and different perspectives than some of the ones that are at the table.
Are these joint meetings regularly scheduled?
That question, right, is typically once a year. It seems that I think we maybe haven't had one in about three years. I talked to several of the council members and I think there was a time when we were having these more like every six months. And some people would prefer a K that said look more like that maybe if I. But I would say expect at least once a year, maybe.
I would have one comment. The prior administration in Farmington Hills attempted to exert. I thought an undue level of influence on the operation library. Library is independent of the city. So to the extent that there was. Perhaps verbal coercion attempted in the past, we should be aware that they do not decide for the library.
Facts. Agreed. And very interesting that you bring that up because. Yeah, I think that was well understood that each body present was its own body. Right, any other comments?
Good job, Bernie.
I would be happy to attend such a meeting. I honestly didn't know what's happening, so. When that was announced, but.
When we didn't announce it here, I only found out about it like last week. And honestly, Chris, we weren't. We weren't invited. I I found out about it by just visiting the FPS website. I was in here and I asked Kelly if she was invited. She advised that she was not, and I decided to show up. Yeah, so.
Good for you and thank you for doing that.
Because like the stuff Sherry's talking about, I mean, and I also know that like Joe Valentine is is moving out of roles. I know there's stuff going on there too. But yeah, I'll be glad to reach out and say, hey, someone needs to call her back. He's slowed our programs down. Okay. All right, so if no further comments, that would bring us to adjournment. So consider ourselves adjourned.
Thank you.
Nice.
Good job.
Thank you.